meeting and March 21st meeting. One is your pleasure.
Do we accept the minutes of those last two years?
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
As opposed. Motion carried. Uh, bills. You all got copies of bills. Any, uh, this was our send?
No, there's none.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Moved by trustee Jefferson. Seconded by trustee Baker. Is any discussion? There's no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
Okay, the first item I have is a, um, letter that came in addressed to actually to Jerry Favreau. Um, as I mentioned before, we have an antique car group coming in the, to the area in August. There will be roughly one hundred cars. On August fifteenth, I would love to have them leave Latsford and drive to Rosas Point and wander around for the, wander around for the morning and then have lunch in the area. Where would you have, where you could schedule some sort of entertainment for them during lunch? Uh, I am thinking at the Civic Center on the lawn and it could be a picnic-type setting. They could park in the lot near Lakeside Coffee, maybe someone could be there to welcome them and tell them that there is to, there is to see and where to go for lunch. Is this something you could help pull together and what do you think would be a good idea? Where for lunch and what entertainment? So I guess they're asking for the use of the Civic Center for a picnic on August fifteenth.
I'll make that motion. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? Madam Eric.
I just share with you that, uh, we, the, uh, events committee has already talked about, um, the entertainment that we're gonna schedule for that day. It's a little difficult because it's a Monday, but we do have the money for it. We just have to work out the details with the chamber and, uh, pick the entertainment and get them hired.
Thank you.
Uh, the second item I have came from the Champlain Valley Habitat. Oh, I'm sorry.
Need a motion.
You got it. You got it.
I was ready to help.
Bumper second.
Yeah.
You got it?
I did.
Okay. No discussion, board? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and the second letter I have is from the Champlain Valley Habitat for Humanity. Uh, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you and your colleagues for all your support and encouragement of our mission to help more of Rosas Point's families attain decent affordable homes. We also wanted to share the fact that we are once again applying to the New York State Affordable Housing Corporation for grant funding on behalf of our homeowners. We are excited about their affordable home ownership development program and its potential benefits to our homeowners both now and in the future. With your support and grant assistance from the H.C., the future of Habitat families continues to shine brightly. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact us. Jessica L. Sears, Champlain Valley Habitat for Humanity treasurer.
Just for our information?
Yeah. The next item I have came from Antrac. It's addressed to the mayor. I am invite, writing to invite you all aboard to participate in the Fourth Annual National Train Day, which will be held on May seventh, two thousand and eleven, to promote and celebrate rail travel as an integral part of the current and future national transportation system and in recognition of the rich tradition of rail in your community. It was a quite lengthy letter and, uh, apparently on May seventh, there's gonna be events held in Washington, D.C., Philadelphia, Los Angeles, and Chicago. That's most informative of us.
We really can't do anything this year because by that time, that station will be under construction and, uh, I don't want a bunch of people around there that time. There you go.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, um, the historical society, uh, because this is the fourth year, we always try to do something because from what I can determine, you know, we're the only place between here and Albany that's been, that celebrates this. So what we're doing this year, because we don't have the station to use, we're probably just gonna have, uh, somebody come in and do a program on, um, on the railroad station. Hopefully, we're trying to get a D and H person, uh, just come to our one regular, one of our regular meetings, which are open to the public, and just have them talk about it. So that will be our celebration this year for, uh, Train Day.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and next item, New York Rural Water Association. Um, the New York Rural Water Association will be honoring our ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty-year members at our upcoming thirty-second annual technical conference and exhibition in Saratoga. Your system has been a member of the New York Rural Water Association for twenty years, and we would like to recognize you at this event. There will be a sign posted throughout the conference which lists these honored members. We are very proud to have the support of these members. On behalf of the staff and board directors of the New York Rural Water Association, we thank you for your continued support to the association. They, they sent a certificate along with that. And I'll move on. Montgomery Hose, He can Ladder and Company. At a recent village board meeting, the village board approved new guidelines defining an active firefighter. Fire company respectfully requests that the village board rescind the motion as these guidelines were not approved by members of the fire company, and we feel that implementing the guidelines the board approved will actually deter membership instead of retaining them. We also request that the board, the village board, accept the definition of an active firefighter as is currently defined by our company bylaws. That was from Gerald Roberts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Good, please. Um, I agree, we should rescind the motion that we made, uh, a couple of meetings ago. However, I do want the public to know that the, uh, guidelines that we approved were those presented to us by the fire department. Uh, the mistake that was made was not every member was on the committee that, uh, that made up the, uh, the guidelines and it never did get back to the whole, the whole fire department. So, uh, I'm going to make a motion that we should, uh, rescind the guidelines that we approved and accept new guidelines based on what is currently in the bylaws.
I'll second that. Moved by trustee Havro, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Is there any discussion, board?
One thing I ask, are they got everything done this time? So they're gonna go with, like, where they're going, who's getting, uh, you know, production? Yes.
It's all done, isn't it? It's all done. It's based on pure active members.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all, all in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is, uh, thank you for, uh, excuse me, it's from the U.S. Department of Commerce, uh, U.S. Census Bureau. Thank you for taking the time to confirm the legitimacy of U.S. Census Bureau field representatives and the work they've been assigned to complete. Many people do not realize that in addition to the decennial census done every ten years, the U.S. Census Bureau also conducts various surveys throughout the decade on important topics such as unemployment, crime, housing, and health. One of these surveys is the American Community Survey, a congressionally mandated monthly survey that provides detailed social and economic data for federal, state, and community planning and policy setting. And to conduct these surveys, they employ a staff of professional field representatives to contact randomly selected households, either in person or by telephone. And all field representatives have photo ID badges that must be shown to the respondent. Uh, field representatives are required by law to keep all collected data confidential. And, uh, if anybody wishes, they can, the residents, to visit their website at www.sensus.gov. Apparently, they were in the village a week or so ago and they needed to be looked into.
What was that, excuse me, what was that website again?
www.sensus.gov.
Century?
Census. S-E-N-S-U-S. C-E-N-S-U-S, excuse me. Uh, the next item.
On that letter, uh, our assessment went down forty-four thousand, but our population went up over two hundred. And the census.
The next item I received was a certified letter from, um, American Legion Montgomery Post nine twelve, and it was actually a, uh, a form for the renewal of their liquor license. And that's just informational. And then at the last meeting, we had, uh, requests from the Samuel D. Champlain Center stage. Um, they requested those flags, but along with the flags, they also asked, uh, the board's, um, consensus onto an events board, and we didn't give approval or disapproval. And they would be interested in looking into purchasing one, possibly. Jerry actually has more information on that.
Well, we've talked about it in our meetings, about getting one of these events board, even a, either an electric one, electronic one, or something similar to maybe what they have at the fire department to put out here. We're thinking maybe here at the rec center, because this is where most of everything goes on, just to be able to announce to the public, um, what's happening, like, uh, hockey tournaments and the skating club and the events that we have on the, uh, the stage this summer. Um, those kinds of things, like this antique car thing that's coming in. And what the committee would like to know is if the board, um, is willing for us to take a look and get, gather information on it, um, we, what we would do would not be any cost to the village, except probably to put it up. And what we would probably recommend is that whoever is going to be using it would be the ones that would maintain it, that would, they would be, wouldn't fall on Michael Bryan to do it, or Carol, or, or myself. If we're having an event, historical society, then we were the ones that would make sure that the, that the notice is there. And really, all we're asking for is if the board thinks it's a good idea, we'll look into it. If not, we don't wanna waste our time, I guess. We have other things to do.
I think anytime we can promote the village, it's a great idea, especially if there's no expense to the village.
I also wanna add that, uh, you know, we got an excellent, uh, uh, grant from, uh, New York State Council, the arts this year. We had twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, plus we had a little bit left from last year from what Stewards had given us. And right now, we have, uh, we have two more weekends we have to fill, but we're waiting for two groups. We're gonna have twelve weekends of entertainment this summer, and, uh, that's no cost to the village, no cost to the taxpayers, and it's all free and open to the public. And last year, we had, I'm gonna say, probably an average of two hundred, two hundred and fifty people each night. And one night, we had a down for, when Reston, um, Night Train played, and still had seventy-five people that came out in the pouring rain. So it's been very successful, and people are already asking about what we're doing this summer, so we've chosen, um, everything from the regional theater, which we're hoping Pfizer will pay for, because they have for the last three years. And, um, we've got, um, bands, and we've got, you know, different kinds of entertainment, so, um, and events board would be nice. We, we work on ways all the time to get the word out, uh, to let people know what's going on. So.
Any other motion for that?
If you are all willing to move forward with it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Any discussion, board? Any discussion, all those in favor, answered by the, uh, I.
Aye.
Phone, motion carried.
And that's all I have.
All right, the report of the mayor and the mortgage of trustee. First thing on the agenda is, uh, my appointments for next year. Deputy Mayor, Brian Jefferson, Village Clerk, two-year term. Carol Hanfield, Deputy Village Clerk, Tracy Graves, two-year term. Treasurer, Arson Luttrell, two-year term. Register, Carol Hanfield, two-year term. Deputy Register, Tracy Graves, two-year term. Attorney, Tom Bernane, one-year term. Acting Justice, one-year term, is John Favreau. Budget Officer, Arson Luttrell, one-year term. Historian, one-year, Donna Lucine. Youth Commissioner, Dan, Dan T. Luttrell, one-year. Library Board Trustee, Donna Lucine, five years. Library Board, Board Trustee, Tim Terrell, four-year term. Hate to tie him, but he didn't get sworn in for a year. So, he's here tonight, Carol, get him. The zoning Board of Appeals, Grant Martin, fulfilling the unexpired term of Tim Linkwood. Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, Joseph True, five-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate, Dan Arrow, one-year term. Planning Board Member, Maggie Barry, five-year term. Planning Board, alternate, Jerry Favreau, one-year term. Clerk to the zoning board, Carol Hanfield, one-year term. Clerk to the planning board, Jerry Favreau, one-year term. The depository of Rivers National, oh, no, uh, Champlain National Bank, uh, and Bank North, and official newspaper, the Press Republic.
Excuse me, Mayor, did you, um, say Rebecca, Deputy Treasurer? It's Rebecca Pelkey.
I think you missed it.
So Rebecca DeSoto?
I had DeSoto, Pelkey, I missed it.
Yeah, Rebecca DeSoto is the deputy treasurer, one-year term. Thank you. Board, is that acceptable, any other motions?
I'll make a motion to accept the appointment of the mayor.
Moved by, uh, trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Havro. Any discussion? Says, uh, all those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, commission appointments, uh, there's nothing. These are mine, and I don't need any help. Police and judicial, Dennis Roberts, chairman, John Huckrow, co-chair. Fires and codes and S.E.Q.R., John Huckrow and Brian Jefferson. Public works, sidewalks and streets, John Huckrow and Francis Baker. Water system, Brian Jefferson, Dennis Roberts. Sewer system, Dennis Roberts and John Huckrow. Electrical, Brian Jefferson and Francis Baker. Flood control and storm sewers, Francis Baker and Brian Jefferson. Personnel and insurance, John Huckrow and Dennis Roberts. Planning and development, Francis Baker and Dennis Roberts. Shared service committee, Brian Jefferson and Francis Baker. Civic, center, parks, beautification and shade trees, uh, Francis Baker and John Huckrow. Library and historian, and senior youth, seniors and youth, Dennis Roberts and Brian Jefferson.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question. Uh, the community events, that committee was established last year.
Yeah.
It's not on here. Is that under the Civic Center, or is that a separate committee?
It's a separate committee, and I don't think we have any, ever assigned anybody.
Yeah, we did. There was John and myself. We were on it last year.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know if you consolidated this year or.
No, I didn't. The clerk gave you this list.
No, my mistake, I was.
Put him on it for bringing it up.
Well, guess what? We didn't change anything, so it's still the same.
All right. Well, I didn't know if you consolidated with the Civic Center.
Thank you for giving that up. Okay. The government policy.
Did you say it was trustee Huckrow?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
The government policy, it says, this, this is a resolution, by the way, you will follow. Set forth the policy for procuring of the village of Rosas Point to meet the requirements of general municipal law, such a one oh four B. Codes of services are not going to improve this because it's exactly the same as it was last year.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second. I said that the, uh, thresholds changed?
No, we amended them, uh.
I guess, right, too.
We amended them back in October.
Yeah. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Local vote. Okay, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
And trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay. Investment policy. That hasn't changed either. Does anybody want to know? What?
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Huckrow, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Uh, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Rules of procedures for public meetings, border proceeds of village of Rosas Point. This was accepted and adopted in December seventh, nineteen ninety-eight, and reviewed April fourth, two thousand and eleven, and I believe there's no changes.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? Any discussion, board? All those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, carry. Village travel policy. And this is, uh, receipts, receipt at meal outlets. Breakfast, twelve dollars, lunch, fifteen, dinner, twenty-four. Mileage is forty-two cents a mile. But that comes up next, anyway. Uh, the policy is the same?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Schedule of meetings, uh, for next year. April fourth, April eighteenth, May second, May sixteenth, May thirty-first, four P.M. That's to accept the ballots. June sixth, June twentieth, July fifth, because of, uh, fourth is a holiday, it's on Tuesday. August one, August fifteen, September sixth, another holiday. September nineteenth, October third, October seventeen, November seventh, November twenty-one, December fifth, December nineteen, January third, Tuesday, January seventeenth, Tuesday, February sixth, February twenty-one, Tuesday, March third, March seventeen, and March eighteen, two thousand and twelve, at four P.M. And need a roll call vote, and at the same time, to authorize the clerk to publish a legal notice on this.
I'll put that in front of the motion.
Move by trustees Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote. Uh, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. Okay, we have, um, a resolution for the authority to sign the budget.
You didn't do your mileage resolution, George?
Forty-two cents a mile.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Oh, okay.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Roberts. Uh, and, uh, discussion?
Mileage.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, vote by your president of I.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Uh, I have a resolution to adopt the budget, but if we're not adopting it, I need to read it. Do we have that on this, uh, here? Sign for me. Not got that yet. That's number eleven. So we're not adopting the budget, I take it?
Okay.
All right, we'll have to pass that. Okay. Authorized the mayor to sign a contract for the, uh, the attorney, village attorney agreement.
I'll make that motion. Second.
George, excuse me, uh, you missed one before that. The authority to sign the legal documents, there's a resolution regarding a grant?
I'm not that, okay.
Guidelines for projects over fifty thousand dollars, it's that.
Okay.
Want me to read it, or you want?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Please.
Whereas this organization has received a special grant in the two thousand nine-ten New York State budget, and whereas there are specific requirements and regulations governing the expenditure of these funds, now therefore, this body resolves the following. Administration of all funds under this grant will be in accordance with all terms and conditions contained in guidelines for projects over fifty thousand dollars for those involved in construction fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten, provided by the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. That George A. Rivers, as mayor of our organization, is hereby authorized to sign legal documents on behalf of our organization, that such signature is acknowledgment of the acceptance of this body of compliance with all terms and conditions of the grant agreement to be executed for the grant. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Question of the port going was duly put through roll call vote, which resulted as follows.
I'll put that in front of the motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Havro. This grant is development of the village of Rosas Point of downtown park and lake access.
How much is that gonna cost?
Free. Free.
It's all free?
Yeah, it is.
And but, we, we're bound by their rules, is that correct?
Yeah.
Which are, like, another book?
Our matches, labor. Most of it's done.
What, they're just landscaping, stuff like that?
Yeah, it's all of it, landscaping, uh, like, some trees.
They buy everything, seeds?
Uh, I don't think they buy the trees. We get them through the power authority. Schedule of site access, September two, two thousand and eight. Purchase of park furniture and signage, thirty-dollar grant. Site landscaping, right, and project completed by, in by August. That's it.
Any motion in the other?
Not yet.
Put that in front of the motion.
Second. Okay. Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Huckrow. Roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow.
Aye.
That's gotta be on the supplement, I'm about to dial.
No, it's on the second. Now, as your one for the, um, village attorneys, you have to get authorization to sign that agreement.
Village attorney, and I think that's the same. Let's see, love it. Hundred and fifty dollars an hour for out of court, a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a.
I'll make a motion to accept that tonight.
I, I just have one question, just on, just from Pascal's comments earlier, is like, is this something that we need to renegotiate and see if we can find an attorney at a cheaper rate?
Can you sign it without a budget?
Pardon?
Can you sign it now without a budget? Passed?
Once I sign this, it's done.
Should we try to negotiate with another lawyer?
I don't hardly think so. This is my own personal reasons.
I mean, and we've had this guy for a long time, he knows our business, and sometimes he's gotta pay a little higher fee, but, you know.
And I don't think he's gonna find anybody cheaper. No, he's kind of a specialist, too, Bill. All the lawyers, you know how they are, they're slow.
Oh, no, I know.
Precise, and, you know, and.
Is he willing to help us out a little bit there, say ninety-five dollars an hour instead of a hundred bucks an hour, whatever it is? I mean, come on, just, we're down to nickel and dimes here, it's ridiculous, but.
We're going to dollars here in a little while.
They all count. Over the length, how long's the contract? Over length, how long's the contract? One year? One year?
Yeah.
A lot of times, Bill, you've just gotta go to an attorney or an engineer.
Oh, no, I understand, oh, yeah, no, I understand that too.
Because if you don't, then you make a mistake, and you have to go back, excuse me, to the attorney to straighten it out. So, it's better to start from step one with the attorney or the engineer, and just follow protocol.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Excuse me, who seconded that? I had Brian Jefferson for the, but then Dennis spoke up, and I didn't get a second?
Yeah.
You want a second?
No, John's.
John did?
I just asked a question.
Sorry.
Uh, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Baker.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Harper.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Now, your next item is, uh, authorization to sign the amendment for the Verizon lease agreement.
Yes, yes. I don't believe that you guys have got a copy of this. No, I just came in this afternoon by email. But, uh, we agreed, as you know, in a fighty battle, we gotta put that antenna up. So, uh, we agreed verbally, and, uh, the contract isn't here, but they're, they're starting to pay rent for that tower in July, whether the antenna's up or not. And that's what this is about.
Our student, we're gonna get, get service.
They're gonna pay us. And I think if they're paying us, what is it, uh, how is that?
$1,200 a month.
$1,200 a month. I think then eventually they'll get an antenna up there.
Is that the one up by my uncle? What, where antenna's that?
On the village water tank.
Water tank.
On the water tank.
If, it does.
Well, we haven't signed contract, but they, they just have procrastinated right along with that.
Is that for cell phones?
Yeah, Verizon. And I was told by a good source, right, that they're famous for doing this. They go around and get all these contracts, right, so nobody else can get there. And we signed that contract about a couple years ago.
July.
So, we put the heat, they'll go either do something, or we're gonna break the contract. So, they came back with this, they're gonna pay us in July. So, but we'll see where it goes.
It's fine to get paid, we should still get the cell phone. We want a cell phone. That's what we want, that's what we started that way, right, Kelly? Signed, signed a contract, we're not gonna make them do it.
Progress is slow.
Oh, so, yeah.
And expensive.
You sent a lawyer, a letter from a lawyer.
We had the lawyer send a letter, and this is the act we got back.
That's fine, that's my concern.
Okay.
So, you, you need a motion, you need authorization to sign it. And when they send it to us, according to them, they will sign it first, then send it to you. You'll have the authorization.
Move it.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any more discussion? If not, all is in favor of voting you to side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Uh, yes, Mayor Rivers, one thing on my agenda tonight, I request, I'll put this in form of a motion. I'll request authorization for Dan Gay and Eugene Leclerc to attend a one-day seminar in Potsdana, New York on 4/20/2011, as part of their hours to keep up their certification. So, I'll put that in form of a motion, second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Baker. There, Bill, there's the travel.
Certification, so gotta have them.
Sewer plant, water plant, right, uh, municipal electric, all these are all necessary trips.
Same with us, we have certifications, I've gotta do it. They're jumping a car together though, right, not two cars.
Oh, yeah, we only got one.
Did they get your electric car, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, they do. That's what we got it for, the state mileage.
That's all I have on my agenda tonight, thank you.
Any other discussion, board? If not, all, all those that are in favor, voting you to side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. All right, trustee Baker. Thank you, sir. Trustee Roberts.
Uh, first thing I'd like to report is, uh, I'd like to remind, uh, the, the parents and the youth that we have a lot of summer programs and fall programs, and the applications need to be in by Wednesday, April 6th. Our summer programs are such as T-ball, baseball, softball, tennis, arts and crafts, reading, swimming. And fall programs are soccer and bowling. So, if you are interested, please sign up at your local schools, or call Janet Turner at 297-6921. Uh, the next thing that I have, um, our, uh, trustee did complete the, uh, the audit for the justice records, and reported that in court records are in excellent condition. It was an excellent audit, and control procedures are in place. Court Marie Quine is to be commended for an excellent job on record keeping. The records of Justice Valon Fabro have been reviewed by the treasurer, and appear to be satisfactory. So, do you need a motion to accept this, or is this just...
We need a motion to accept that, or is that...
Yes, that motion, George. Yes, it does, yeah.
To accept the audit. I know the motion looks like they are. Second. Trustee Baker, seconded by trustee Jefferson. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all is in favor of voting you to side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Now, last thing I'd like to do is just take, and I realize it's late, but, uh, I think it's important that residents realize just what we're getting out of the Dodge Memorial Library. Our library did an excellent PowerPoint presentation on statistics and usage of the library over the last three years, and how it has grown, has an example. Um, our library collection has increased from 2008 to 2010. From, uh, children's nonfiction books went from 792 to 5,108. Our adult nonfiction went from 2,969 to 3179. And, um, library circulation, um, was up 190% for children fiction over the last three years, and the same thing with adult fiction, it increased 38%. Um, changes at the library, full-time library director effective July 1st, 2009. We have an adult reading room, a children's area, three new computers for the usage, a new circulation desk. The library is open 34, 35 hours per week. We do numerous outreach programs, as well as library sponsor program. Some services that are offered free in the public are internet and, uh, Wi-Fi usage, book lending, children's programs, summer reading program, free bulletin board, uh, music club, and a space available for meetings. Um, internet usage has increased, uh, 62% over the last three years. With three terminals in 2008, uh, we had 1,373 users, and 2010, 1,982. Um, outreach services, we do monthly visits to three area preschools and a child, childcare learning center, providing a story and an educational activity. Book deliveries to preschool, resources to local school for research assistance. Uh, some of the outreach programs, in 2009, the, the library has touched lives of over 1,300 children, ages birth to 12. In 2010, they've touched 1,800 children. Um, library sponsor programs, 2008, they had seven. 2009, they had 68, and 2010, we have 102. Uh, summer reading attendance, this is great, our kids are going to the library in the summertime. Um, in 2008, we had 105, and in 2010, we're at 449. So, you can see the library's getting used in the summertime. We do outreach overseas, we provide unused books to military troops overseas through Operation Paperback. We provide used books to military bases in the United States through Operation Paperback. Um, so, just as an, as an example, in 2008, we had patron usage totaled 5,837 people. In 2009, that increased to 6,118, and in 2010, patron usage totaled 6,836 people. That's a 13, a 15% increase over three years. And we have a total number of registered patrons, 2008, we had 253, 2009, 494, and 2010, 684. The regular borrowers have increased 170% over the last three years. We receive grants, we applied for 24 grants, 11 grants were received totaling $8,564. Um, so, we... The, the point here is, we have seen a continual increase in use of our public library, and that is the vision, is to keep the public library, um, in use and have, uh, the increased usage over the, the next four coming years. I, I, I thank Dodge for giving us this report, it's, it's very informative. I had no clue that our library would use as much as it is.
And if I can just add one thing today, we received a check in the mail through our central library office, Clint Missus Franklin Library System, for over $1,200, and that's part of the state that we received. So, I can get that tomorrow.
So, I'd like to give yourself a wholehearted thank you, as well as your library work, very fine job, you guys.
And if I can, if I can add, um, the grants that are received are generally for, um, programs, and they don't cost anything. So, they're for additional programs at the library, and all it's costing is my time, and I'm there anyways.
I'm all for that library, I grew up in that library.
I know, I know, but just to let you know.
I wanna see it get successful.
Thank you.
So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
On behalf of me, I have to commend you, what you have done to that library since then.
Thank you.
I, I know what it was like beforehand. And like I said, I don't want to hurt knowledge, and I'm not going to, but it's been nothing but progress.
Well, thank you, you have a lot of support, Mr. Mayor.
We gotta find money for the roof.
I'm working on grants.
All right.
I'm working on grants.
Fall down on my head.
Yep.
Why don't you make a comment on the roof? The roof is 104 years old. And it was a gift from Dr. Dodge a hundred and forty years ago, so it's cost us nothing to that time. I sometimes think of that roof and think, we owe it. You have a fine, outstanding historical building, it's one of the things we've got left. Speaking of history, I'm heading to begin to...
And that's part of, it's part of some of the duties that I'm writing the grants, and that's why I've written two to help with the, the roof, so we're just waiting to hear one.
In the words of Mr. Euer, the board of, uh, the Dodge Library President, "The Dodge Library is a jewel in the crown of the village of Ross's Point."
Sure is.
And it's gaining such, um, a reputation. "Where is your building opened?" I would be asked five or six years ago. And why isn't anyone there, and why can't children use it, and why, why, why? Walk into a library and plaster and say, "Oh, yours is Ross's Point, I have your trustee there," and it's not children user-friendly and so on. And now, it's just one compliment after another, we're in line. And what the state wanted was for us to follow Vermont, because we were way behind, and make it a center of village activity, and this lady has done that. And I, I think she deserves a round of applause.
All right, Carol, do you have anything for us?
No, I do not.
Are you saying?
I just want to report that the, uh, state auditor is still in the office. He came last Monday, and he'll be back tomorrow.
Got it?
Yes.
Ryan's?
I have none.
Thank you. And with that, I'll open up the public, anybody wishing to address the board may do so. Go ahead, Jerry.
Three months from today, the 4th of July celebration will be all over. Just wanna let you know the committee is meeting, um, every, every month, and, um, we've got some new things scheduled for this year, um, we're gonna have a 5K run, and, um, also a lot of the old things. But one of the really special things that I think is happening is the Patriot flag is coming to Ross's Point on that Friday night. And for those who are not aware, it's a flag, it's 30 by 60 feet, it's gonna be flown in 50 states in 50 weeks, and it's gonna end up at, uh, ground zero on 9/11. And, uh, Ross's Point, from what I could determine, the last time I looked at the website, is one of five places in the state of New York, not including, uh, New York City, that the flag is going to be flown. And that's thanks to Tom Middleton from Vermont, who's the coordinator for, for Vermont. But other than that, the committee's working hard to get, you know, get, uh, good events for the whole weekend, so, watch for posters and press releases.
That event for the flag, that turning out to be quite the event, we, we anticipate to have quite a few, um, participating fire departments and, uh, uh, court patrol, police agencies here, it should be quite a thing.
I'm setting up, I'm setting up the honor guard.
Perfect.
In the bag, uh, pipers in the bag, in the...
It's, it's gonna be really nice for the village, quite the honor.
We sent out a lot of invitations, uh, don't know how many will come. We did, we invited a lot, like, the, the governors and the town governors, and all the senators, and their representatives, and we sent President Obama, um, an invitation, and Hillary Clinton, she's been here before, so... But, uh, even if they don't come, it puts the name of Ross's Point in front of their face, and that's just as important sometimes, so...
Got it, Jerry?
That's it.
Harry, you got any words of wisdom for us?
Um, I, I know it's gonna come as a tremendous disappointment to the board, but I'm going to do this in the abridged Cliff Notes version because of the length of the meeting tonight, okay? I'll just give you a couple highlights. There's one thing I did wanna comment on briefly, we were talking about mandates. We have approximately a $250 million budget at the county, and 90% of that budget are mandates. So, we, we have discretion over about $25 million. And, and it, and it's getting worse, and there's no, but, there's no relief at all. And the cuts, uh, you know, you were talking about village cuts. County cuts are gonna be in the millions of dollars, and we're looking at Medicaid, probation, Clinton community, social services, healthcare. And the worst one that I see is, as being totally onerous for all of us, is that Medicaid can change on a 30-day notice. That means that they don't have to wait six months or a year. They can call us up and say, "Next month, the Medicaid formula is going to change, and you may have to come up with an extra $500 or a million dollars next month for Medicaid." It is, it is unbelievable, the things that are in this budget. They're killing us by, and there's a lot of little things too. It's sort of like death by pinpricks. It's, they're, they're after us all the time. And how that translates into a county, uh, tax rate, I, I don't have a clue at this point, but we're at 588, and that's our goal. And whether we get there or not, I don't know, but we're gonna make every effort to do that. But it's gonna be extremely hard, because the state of New York is putting all these new burdens on us. Um, I wanted to quickly talk about the airport, which is kind of a, a, a real positive. Employments are up 42%, but the real highlight is, and I know that we took some criticism for this on the parking, but we, we've gotten $60,000 in the first month. And, uh, we're gonna probably hit a profit of somewhere between $450,000 and $500,000 in a year on parking alone. You're gonna see a new garage down there, and you're gonna see a new airport addition, because we are at 100,000 employments, we're gonna go to 250 over the next three to five years, and we're gonna build, we're gonna add on the airport, we're looking for grants and funding, but part of the debt service will be paid by, uh, the, uh, parking fees. Uh, the next one, you probably read about this in the paper, and I just wanted to comment briefly on it. Uh, the home healthcare services, which of course, a number of people in Ross's Point have. Uh, we are looking at this point, in a request for proposals, to send that out to see if we can, uh, look for other alternatives. Government today is looking at alternatives, cheaper alternatives. It costs us $2 million for this program. And we're gonna have requests for proposals to see, the service has to be provided. The beauty of this is that the county has a license to do this, there are no new licenses in the state of New York, so we can sell that license, still provide the same service, and hopefully, take care, there were many residents from Ross's Point at the meeting telling me great stories, and I know personally, uh, of some relative to my father-in-law, in terms of, of services that we received, uh, here in Ross's Point. But it, there comes a time when you have to say, can we afford this or not? So, we're in a position where we're gonna request for proposals, look at our license and see what we haven't made our decision, maybe nobody will bid, we don't know. But other counties have done it, and they've saved an awful lot of money. The last one, quickly, maybe I owe the fire department an apology in my quest to try and get a 10% tax relief. Uh, I think I may have created an issue relative to standards, uh, and, uh, this came up at the school board meeting, uh, when we talked about it. And of course, my position has always been that each department sets up its own standards. It does not, uh, there is no uniform standard, and apparently, in, in the, in the quest to get standards in Ross's Point, there was some confusion about that issue. They, they didn't care what the standards were, I was quoting county average... get a ten percent tax relief, uh, I think I may have created an issue relative to standards, uh, and, uh, this came up at the school board meeting, uh, when we talked about it, and of course, my position has always been that each department sets up its own standards. It does not, uh, there is no uniform standard, and apparently, in, in the, in the quest to get standards in Rouse's Point, there was some confusion about that issue. They, they didn't care what the standards were, I was quoting county averages at the meeting, which dealt with approximately, uh, forty-five calls a year, but that was just an average, it was not something that, that was being mandated by us. But I also just wanted to comment quickly, this is the easiest job I have ever had in terms of trying to sell to seven different boards the fact that firemen should get a ten percent tax reduction. It was unanimous on the part of every single one of those boards, once they realized the facts, and I hope it does something for the issue of retention and recruitment, because that's the purpose of this thing.